Man, peace everybody, man. I hope everybody doing well today. Oh, hold on. Yeah, I hope everybody doing well today. How y'all doing? Like the show, share the show. Tell a friend, tell a friend. We're about to get it in. It's the study session. The study session. So, uh, let me get everything worked out so that we can get it going. Um. What up, Omar? Peace. Peace, peace, peace. I don't know if it's safe to say black African power right now around certain people. Yeah, man, but I like the show, share the show, tell a friend, tell a friend. Um, we're not gonna be too long. We just gonna get a class in. We're gonna get a little session there, man, from a virology standpoint. And, uh, we just gonna deal with what we're gonna deal with from a vi- uh, I don't know if y'all can see this, but yeah, we're gonna go here, volume one. If you, if you have this book, we're gonna go to page, uh, 198. Principles of Virology. If you don't have this book, this book, you know, is roughly about a hundred and something dollars, maybe more now, I don't know. But if you have both volumes, it's a two hundred and something dollar set. I don't know if you can find it cheap or anything like that, but this, you know, high level science right here. But, uh, he said as always, say, "Yeah, man, I like the show, share the show, man." Uh, to get some people in the building. Hold on one minute, let me, let me get this thing going before we crack it open. So we can kind of get things off on the right foot. By the way, while we, uh, while I'm doing this, by the way, by the way, let me do this. Man, go pick up your copy of What SARS-CoV-2 Taught Me? Right now at same tree different branch publishing dot com. What SARS-CoV-2 Taught Me, same tree different branch dot, same tree different branch publishing dot com. The link is also in the description. Okay, alright. Uh, yeah, 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 I see you, Zane. You in the building. I was about to, I was about to say, man, what's happening, man? You ain't gotta work tomorrow. You ain't gotta work tomorrow. So we're gonna kind of get into it. Get on the science tip. I don't know if anybody else live or whatnot, uh, if they are aware. I don't expect a large crowd, but it's just pretty much a study group anyway. And not everybody, you know, not everybody putting in, uh, the work studying. Not like we gonna study. But we got some things we wanna hash out. And we wanna kind of deal with. Nah, we ain't talking vaccines and none of that. We just gonna deal with the high level science. I'm saying, that's how we gonna deal with it. But, uh, like the show, share the show. What up, Dave? Be peace to you, bro. I can't really see everybody the way I wanna see them, so let me, um, let me stop sharing for a minute. Let me move the screen over here. Let me do it like that. Try to get y'all on my phone, so I can kind of see what's going on. Okay. Oh, yeah, I ain't got nothing to do with it. That's their business. They live. That's cool. Alright, I don't know nothing about that. I'm live. I'm dealing with high level science. I'm live and I'm dealing with high level science. I don't want your opinion. I ain't dealing with nobody opinion. I ain't dealing with nobody, uh, unread sources. I ain't read the sources out of the way. I ain't dealing with none of that. I ain't, I ain't arguing with my own people over no pain. Nah, I ain't doing a pain argument. Cool. I'm for us, boss. For us, boss. I'm all about uplifting my people, educating our people, and, and doing what we need to do. That's what I'm about. So, I know none of that is anybody else on. So let's get to it, man. So, chapter seven is called synthesis of RNA from DNA templates. Um, how did we get here? Well, we got here because of, uh, we got here because of a class that me, Zane, Anusha, and I guess, uh, when he tuned in, uh, we was tapped into. And, um, let me reshare the screen 'cause I am going to deal with something. I'm gonna do this live for y'all. I don't even care. But I, I need to get the copyright disclaimer up, so I need to put this on the screen so we can, um, we can deal with it the way we need to. Protect the brain. Copyright disclaimer on the section 107, the Copyright Act of 1976 allows us to make fair use for purposes such as criticism, comment, news reporting, teaching, scholarship, or research. Fair use is a use permitted by copyright statute that might otherwise be infringing. Yeah, y'all like how I do that. Gotta get it in that quick. Alright, so what you talking about winning a book? You ain't got chapter seven? Winning, not my book. Chapter seven in this book. Not my book, this book. We ain't talking about this book right now. We talking about the principles of biology. So here's how we got here. Um, still sharing, right? Yep.
Hello, everybody. Welcome back to Virology Live. Today, we are going to talk about transcription and RNA processing. So you may ask, what is transcription? You have probably a different view of it, I suppose. Something to do with writing. However, today, it has nothing to do with writing, so let's, let's define what here's our Baltimore scheme. mRNA in the middle, right, and our seven different genotypes, genome types arrayed around it. I suppose that's all good. With you all, right? And transcription is this big red arrow here. It is the synthesis of mRNA from a DNA template. And not only is it a DNA template, but it is a double stranded DNA template. Commit that to memory. Transcription can only happen on double stranded DNA templates.
Alright, so this, uh, this lecture, uh, really is class because we, he, he's doing the classes. He's teaching the classes for free on, on YouTube, which is different than what he normally does for his college level courses where everybody has to go in and do all of that. He's teaching this class in particular for free. That's what he's doing. So, in, in, um, Virology, Virology Live, session seven, as you can see, transcription and RNA processing. Um, we're dealing with that. Now, in the footnotes or the notes of the chapters, it says, go to chapter eight, but this is not chapter eight in the biology book. This is chapter eight. In the, uh, this is chapter seven in Principles of Virology. So what I'm gonna do first is before we even get to down the line in this lecture, this will be a two-part thing because really this is a study session for those interested. This isn't for, uh, whoop-de-doo now. See, you might have a different version of, uh, James, you might have a different version to this one, 'cause this is updated. It's five editions. So I don't know what edition you get. I don't care if you got it for free. If you got it for free, then you can share with people in the audience that might wanna have the book. It might not had a, you know what I'm saying? Nah, you good, bro. You ain't gotta switch nothing. You just stay on the Azavella. Oh. You can stay on the Azavella. I need to switch. Hold on, y'all, let me, um, oh, nah, let me do it like this. There you go. Again, man, like the show, share the show, tell a friend, tell a friend. We're having a study group. We're not gonna be too long. Uh, but we gonna get tight, we gonna get right, so, uh, we wanna do a short version edition then, you know what I'm saying? Tomorrow, we'll come back and we'll do another, another class. Oh, you don't have an updated version? Okay, I got you. Alright, so in chapter seven, if you get chapter seven in volume one in Molecular Biology, volume one, you go to page 198. And I'm gonna read from the introduction just to kind of catch people up. And then, we're gonna build off of this. Alright, so it says, "During infectious cycles of viruses with DNA genomes, viral messenger RNA synthesis must proceed production of proteins. In most cases, this step is accomplished by the wholesale enzyme that produces cellular mRNA. RNA polymerase two, this enzyme also transcribes the, uh, the viral DNA of retroviruses. The signals that control the expressions of the genes of the viruses are similar to those of cellular genes. In fact, the study of viral DNA templates was crucial for identification of cellular transcription proteins and elucidation of mechanisms of transcription. In contrast, viral RNA polymers transcribe the large DNA genome of viruses that replicate the cytoplasm, such as the APOX virus. But these enzymes resemble their wholesale counterparts in several aspects. In most cases, the gene of the viral DNA templates are expressed in a defined reproductive sequence. Enzymes and regulatory proteins are made during the initial period of infection, whereas structural proteins of virus particles are produced subsequently. This pattern is quite different from the continual expression of all viral genes that is characteristic of the infectious cycles of, of many RNA viruses, which was later discussed in chapter six. The primary determinant of temporal order expression of genes from viral DNA templates is regulation of transcription. Consequently, the mechanisms by which the cellular and viral proteins cooperate to establish specific patterns of viral gene expression are the key to understanding progression through the infectious cycle of these viruses. Now, in this chapter, uh, it's described, in this chapter, we describe the cellular and viral machines that transcribe viral DNA templates with, uh, special focus on the contributions of studies of viruses to deciphering fundamental cellular process. Elucidation of the molecular strategies that ensures sequential transcription of the genes of the DNA viruses has identified a number of common mechanisms executed in virus-specific fashion. As a collateral divided, we have gained important insight into cellular mechanisms that control progression through cell cycle. Now, at the beginning of this conversation, you heard him say from the onset, transcription can't happen unless it, it involves a double stranded DNA. So we're gonna hear him say that again.
Different genotypes, genome types arrayed around it. I suppose that's all good. And transcription is this big red arrow here. It is the synthesis of mRNA from a DNA template. And not only is it a DNA template, but it is a double stranded DNA template.
Alright, so synthesis of RNA from DNA templates. Uh, there's ten different bullet points that I wanna hit on before we move forward. Transcription is the first viral biosynthetic reaction following infection of cells by double stranded DNA viruses. To form a template suitable for transcription, I'm gonna sound exactly like him. Gapped, double stranded or single stranded DNA genomes are converted to double stranded DNA molecules by cellular enzymes. Retroviral RNA genomes are converted to double stranded pro-viral DNA that is integrated into the cellular genome by viral enzymes. Studies of viral transcription led to the identification of elements in DNA that direct pre mRNA or mRNA synthesis include promoters and enhancers that are binding sites for cellular proteins that mediate and regulate transcription. The cellular transcriptional machinery alone is sufficient to transcribe some viral DNA templates. Viral proteins can stimulate transcription of their own transcriptional unit to establish a positive auto-regulatory loop or active transcription of different viral genes. I'm talking all the way over y'all here, but we finna slow this down because this is why we even having a dang on study group, 'cause me, uh, Zane, and, uh, Luc was in there scratching that head a little bit. Even though I guessed some of the answers right, you know what I'm saying? You still wanna, wanna get better at it. So transcription of subsets of viral genes in distinct temporal periods, phases is a characteristic feature of the reproductive cycle of all viruses with DNA genomes, including bacteriophages. Viral proteins that regulate transcription may bind to viral promoter sequences directly or indirectly in association with cellular proteins. Some viruses, including the herpes virus, establishes a latent infection in which the transcription of lytic, L-Y-T-I-C, genes is inhibited. And in some cases, unique latency associated with transcription units are expressed. Most viral genes are transcribed by the cellular RNA polymers two. But some small viral RNAs are produced by RNA polymerase three. Suppression of cellular transcription by viral components can divert limited cellular resources to aid viral transcription. This is why you have to slow this all the way down because of the words that they're using to change the whole game. The viral RNA polymers and initiation proteins of large DNA viruses are often structural and functional analogues of cellular transcription proteins. Let's go, Vince.
Commit that to memory. Transcription can only happen on double stranded DNA templates. So if you are a virus with a single stranded DNA or a gapped DNA classes two and seven, you have to make your genome double stranded before it becomes mRNA. So that's transcription. I'm noticing in the chat, someone said, "T," the person identified as T, "where to sit." It's always interesting in a class, right, where you sit. And I miss teaching a class. Hopefully, we will, we will do it in the spring semester. But many people come early and they take their seats. Some people always sit in the back. Some, they always take the same seats. I do the same thing. And then there's some people who sit in front. I, I have great respect for them. I think it takes some good spot to sit in the front. Um, and, but that is the first ten minutes or so, people still come in, of course. Most of them tend to go around the sides of the room and walk up. But I have to tell you, one or two people will walk right in front of me as I'm talking. No qualms about that. I don't get it. I would never do that. I kind of think that's disrespectful. Not that I feel they're disrespecting me, but isn't that weird that you would walk right in front of a person giving a talk? I think one year I said hello to someone who walked in front of me and didn't even notice. Alright, so this is transcription. This is my definition of transcription. This is Principles of Virology, definition of transcription. But you will find people saying transcription for other things, and they're just not right. Take it from Mr. Pedantic. Many people call the synthesis of mRNA, say, from a negative strand RNA transcription, or the synthesis of mRNA from real virus, double stranded RNA transcription. It's not right. It's not transcription. Transcription was originally defined as the synthesis of mRNA from double stranded DNA templates. What is that called for real viruses? It's mRNA synthesis. And so other virologists, my colleagues, will say I'm being pedantic. Fine, I wrote the book. I'm allowed to be pedantic. If you don't like it, use your own term, but not in my presence, because I will correct you. Now, the, this transcription, of course, is what we do in our cells every second of our lives. We make mRNA from double stranded DNA, and that, of course, happens in the nucleus, as you'll see momentarily. But many viruses do that as well. So today's lecture, in contrast, right, today's session, in contrast to last session on Monday, is something that happens both in cells and uninfected cells and in virus-infected cells, whereas RNA synthesis from RNA templates is a unique RNA property, at least for long viral RNAs. Alright, so, uh, all these viruses in red here undergo transcription because they have double stranded DNA in their reproduction cycles. Retroviruses produce a double stranded DNA template from their RNA genome, and that's transcribed to mRNA. Parvoviruses make their DNA double stranded. Actually, they don't do it. The cell does it for them conveniently, as you'll see. And the double stranded DNA is transcribed. And the hepatitis B virus, gapped genome is repaired by the cell. These DNAs get in the nucleus and the cell goes, "No, it's broken. We have to fix it." You know, Chandler Wallace and Gromit, right? We have to fix it, and they do. We will talk about that, I think, next week. Talk about DNA replication. And so adenoviruses, herpes, simplex, polyomavirus, hepatitis B virus, parvoviruses, and retroviruses have transcription as part of their reproduction cycles. Alright, so that's what transcription is. Now, this is another key point that you should remember. Why? Because it is, is my video choppy today? Let me know, because if it is, I can reboot. Yeah, I see that it's a bit choppy. Let me reboot my switcher. I'll be back in a second. Alright, looks smooth. Yeah, so we have still some technical problems here at the incubator, which we will solve because we are scientists. We can solve anything. But if you do notice issues, please tell me. I'm, got the chat right here. Am I right? And I will fix it one day. We'll have someone here all the time to help me. As I was saying, here's one thing you need to know. Uh, if in cells infected with DNA viruses, at least one protein, and sometimes more, are needed for DNA replication. So when a DNA virus genome comes in the cell, no matter what DNA virus it is, at least one protein needs to be made in order for DNA replication to occur. And of course, DNA replication is needed to make more viruses, right? So from the smallest virus to the biggest, that's something in common. Transcription has to occur first to make that protein. However, not all DNA templates are ready for transcription, as you may know already. The single stranded ones are not ready. The gapped ones are not ready. So they, they have to be dealt with, and we'll talk about that in a moment. But some DNA templates are ready. And here's an example of one that is ready. The genome of polyomavirus. And so this includes viruses like SV40, which we will talk about quite a bit in this course, small DNA virus. It's captured, we've talked about. The genome is a circle of double stranded DNA. It's one continuous circle. Very interesting genome, which we will talk more about. When that gets in the nucleus after infection, the virus is taken up by a caveolin-dependent endocytic pathway. It eventually, the DNA eventually gets in the nucleus. It's ready for transcription. Double stranded. It's perfect. In fact, it's even wrapped around nucleosomes. We mentioned previously that in your cell, your DNA is wrapped around a number of proteins, including histones, to, to form this nucleosome. Look, it looks like a cake with the DNA wrapped around it, a small cake. Uh, and this is a good way to regulate mRNA synthesis, as we'll see today. Now, this DNA is unusual because in the particle, it's actually in, in the form of what we call a mini chromosome. The DNA is wrapped around histones. Most viruses are not chromatinized, alright? Chromatinized is a word I will use. It is completely jargon. And most people on the street do not know what it means. I just love it. Chromatinization and chromatized. It means that the DNA is wrapped around proteins in the form of these cakes or, or histones. And that's important because in this cell, big DNAs are compacted that way, so it keeps them organized, and it also regulates their transcription. So some viruses are ready, others are not. Let's talk about the ones that are not ready for transcription. So again, when a virus genome comes in, it needs to be transcribed. The DNA genome has to be transcribed because you need at least one protein to get any further, further in the reproduction cycle. And so if the genome is not ready, it's got, has to be made ready. And here are three examples of viral genomes that are not ready for transcription. First.
Alright, so before he actually says anything, I think you may be able to see him in the top left-hand corner, maybe not, but on page, uh, 201, this slide that he has up right here is on page 201. So let me, let me is on page two oh one. So let me, let me give you a little bit of clarity of what it says in footnote seven point one. And then I'm gonna go to, well, I need to read something first to you because I mentioned this earlier in the introduction. It says that during the infectious cycle of viruses with DNA genomes, viral messenger RNA mRNA synthesis must proceed production of proteins. In most cases, this step is accomplished by wholesale enzymes that produces cellular mRNA RNA polymers two. Table seven point one. So we're looking at table seven point one in the book. And this is an example. Now, this is figure seven point one and it states that conversion of viral genomes to templates for transcription by cellular RNA polymers. And then he's going to label the viruses there. You have A. Hepinoviral templates for transcription are closed circular double stranded DNA molecules. Such DNA is formed by repair of the partially double stranded gap DNA genomes by cellular DNA repair and synthesis enzymes. B is the single stranded DNA genomes of, of parvovirus, which you heard him mention, such as an adenovirus associated virus carry and inverted terminal repetition with a free three OH end. So you see at the end, it looks like an OH, right? Copying the viral genome from this primer by cellular DNA polymers, which is later discussed in chapter nine, produces a double stranded template for transcription. C viral enzymes and catalyze the conversion of retroviral plus RNA genomes to double stranded DNA and its subsequent integration into the wholesale genome of proviral DNA, which is also discussed in chapter ten. To give you more clarity on figure seven point one is what he, what he's talking about right now. Says some viral genomes must be converted to templates suitable for transcription. You heard him say that. So I'm gonna say it again. Some, and this is in a book. Highlight it just like he has it right here. Now it says viral DNA molecules that are transcribed by cellular RNA polymers must enter the infected cells nucleus. So since the pandemic, we should be very familiar with how viruses enter the cell. But now, I mean, into the body, but now we're going further. We're going into the cell. You know, there's an outer layer of the cell. This is telling us that viral DNA molecules that are transcribed by cellular RNA polymers must enter the infected cell nucleus. So now we know we have a cell, it's infected and this RNA polymers must enter the infected cells nucleus. So now we know it's at the root, right? And here lies where the DNA is because the DNA is in the nucleus of the cell. Alright, and then it says, but there is considerable variations in the reactions needed to produce templates that can be recognized by the cellular machinery. Some viral genomes are double stranded DNA molecules that can be transcribed as soon as they reach the nucleus. Transcription of specific genes is therefore the first biosynthetic reaction in cells infected by adenoviruses, herpes viruses, papillomair viruses and polyomaires viruses. You've heard him say that. Other viral DNA genomes must be converted from the from in which they, it says this twice, and this is a typo. It says be converted from the form in which they entered the cell double stranded molecules that serve as transcriptional templates. Now viral DNA genomes that are partially or largely single stranded, such as those with the hepnaviruses and parioviruses respectively, are converted to fully double stranded DNA molecules by cellular enzymes. The prerequisite sites for expression of the retroviral genetic information are more demanding for the plus strand RNA genome must be converted into viral DNA and integrated into the cellular genome. Reverse transcription creates an appropriate double stranded DNA template that includes the singles, I mean, the signals needed for this recognition by components of the cellular transcriptional machinery. Let's continue.
So hepatovirus genomes. These are circles of DNA which is, which are partially double stranded. There's a gap where there's a single strand and it's the negative strand. And then there's a piece of RNA attached to one end. That's the green part here. There's also a protein stuck on the genome at another end of the, the DNA. This cannot be transcribed. And I want you to commit that to memory. Only double stranded DNA is a substrate for transcription. If I ever meet you somewhere, the first thing I will ask you is how many genome types are there? And the second thing I will ask you is what is the only substrate for transcription? And then after that, we can chat. No, I'm just kidding, but you, you get the point. So the, the hepatovirus DNA has to be repaired. And in fact, this is done by the cell. When DNAs are in the nucleus, the cell is always monitoring them to make sure they're proper. And proper means double stranded with no breaks. So if something like the hepatogeneome comes in, does, the cell doesn't like this. And it repairs it. There are, there are a host of proteins in the nucleus of the cell that can recognize.
I hope y'all catching this. He basically just said what's going on in the cell and how it's monitoring things. And if it sees a break, then you have DNA repair so that it'll continue to be double stranded. Because remember, when it, when it, when it's transcribed, right, it has to be what's saying? Say it again, because you put it in chat earlier. When we're dealing with what we're dealing with, in order to transcribe, DNA has to be what? Only the double strands, right? Boom.
When a DNA is damaged and they can fix it. So this hepatovirus genome hepatitis B virus genome undergoes DNA repair and it ends up as a double stranded DNA. It's actually a circular double stranded DNA, sort of like the polyomavirus genome. That can be now transcribed. Then we have the parvovirus genomes, which are single stranded. And the cell looks at it and goes, I don't like single stranded DNA. And it fixes it. It fills in this gap and makes it double stranded. The virus's machinery is not doing that. Okay, the virus genome does not repair this. It's the cell that sees it as single stranded. The virus cannot repair it because before it can, well, first of all, the genome doesn't encode a polymerase. But later on, the virus DNA is reproduced with the help of a viral protein. Okay. And finally, retrovirus genomes are not ready for transcription. Why not? There's, there are an A, the particle, right? They have to be reverse transcribed and made into a double stranded DNA. And then finally, that double stranded DNA is integrated into the whole cell genome and then it can be transcribed. Not before, not as a circle. And this integrated copy here in blue is surrounded by purple DNA, which is showing you what the cell is. So that's the way these three genomes are made ready for transcription. Sorry, let's summarize. We have transcription is the production of mRNA from double stranded DNA. It occurs with all of these viruses. And what we're going to do today is talk about the process of transcription, the nuts and bolts. And then the fact that in many cases, the transcription actually doesn't give you mRNA. It gives you a precursor to mRNA, which then must be processed further to get an mRNA. And hence the name of this session, transcription and RNA processing. Now in our cells, your, your cells and mine, we are, we are eukaryotes. That's a kind of a division of living things to indicate the presence of a nucleus. Eukaryotes have nuclei opposed to prokaryotes, which
I want to stop him before he gets any further because right here, he, in the book, it starts at the introduction and goes forward. And then he goes to two oh one, but now he's back to one ninety nine in the book. Just so it's not throwing people off. And what he's talking about is that properties of cellular RNA polymers that transcribe viral DNA. So here you have eukaryotes have three transcriptional systems. If you're looking on the screen, you see three transcriptional systems. Okay, so it says a general feature of eukaryote cells in a division of transcriptional labor among three DNA dependent RNA polymers. These enzymes designate RNA polymers one, two and three. Synthesize, uh, synthesize different kinds of cellular RNAs. Uh, and then we'll go to table seven, two in a minute, which is what he is describing in a second here. Yeah, on the screen. Yep, just like the book. Except for the book is more written out. So, and, and it continues. Since RNA polymers two makes precursors to both MRNAs and small regulatory RNA molecules. The other two polymers produce stable RNAs such as ribosomal RNAs and transfer RNAs, which you'll see T RNA. Right? You see the T RNA in RNA polymers three. So you have RNA polymers one, which is what I mentioned, RNA polymers two, just for people who can follow along. And then RNA polymers three. So when polymers three, which is the bottom table, you have, which is what we're referring to, you have the T RNAs. Now synthesis of these stable housekeeping RNAs must be calibrated to match the rates of sales growth and division. But regulations of mRNA synthesis is crucial for orderly, orderly development and differentiation in eukaryotes as well as the response of cells to their environment. Now, the evolution of RNA polymers was distinct transcriptional responsibilities appeared to be a device for maximizing opportunities for control of mRNA synthesis. While maintaining a constant and abundant supply of RNA species essential for the metabolism of all cells. So let's get this break now. We know what we're dealing with now. Under enzyme, we're dealing with polymers. Uh, RNA polymers level one, RNA polymers level two, RNA polymers level three, and we're dealing with pre RNA and then we're dealing with mRNA. Uh, pre and then pri, uh, pri, and he's going to explain all this mRNA. And then we get down to pre T RNAs. And then we'll get over under the cellular RNA. And then when we get into the viral, right? When we get into the viral, then we'll get an understanding of those. Now, now that we have the templates, I will be able to help us there with polymers, RNA polymers two, template and three. Because I got the stuff right here to help us. Here we go.
And eukaryotes are more recent in evolution of Earth. So these are the eukaryotic enzymes that make RNA from DNA. And there are three of them in us, Paul one, two and three. All of these initiate RNA synthesis de novo. They don't need a primer. Isn't that great? They don't need a primer. And so Paul one makes ribosomal RNA. We have to make ribosomal RNA. Ribosomes are made of protein and RNA, a bunch of ribosomes.
Alright, so remember when we did the whole ribosomal build uh, not too long ago, we talked about it being one of the, uh, the forgotten pieces of, of this whole thing. Well, it's back. And now we know the, uh, ribosomes are in the pre RNA standard on the cellular RNA.
Some more RNAs in fact. So this Paul one does that. As far as we know, no viral RNAs are made by Paul one. Now, that's not the case for both two and three. These are cell enzymes, but some viruses, these are utilized in their reproduction cycles. So Paul two is the enzyme that makes precursors to mRNA. So pre mRNA is technically the way we should say the process occurs because in most cases, the product is a precursor to what will finally be mRNA. And you'll see why that is in a moment. So Paul two makes pre mRNA for both our cells and for many, many viruses. It also makes the primary micro RNAs. We'll see later today that micro RNAs are very small RNAs that are processed from primary precursors or transcripts, primary micro RNAs. And then they're processed down to twenty one, twenty two bases. They're very short. RNA Paul two also makes small nuclear RNA. These are the RNAs that are attached to proteins in the nucleus. And today we'll see that they participate in splicing. And they also, Paul two also makes long non-coding RNA. Which, what is that you may ask? Well, long none.
Alright, so again, he's giving you the breakdown of what these first three abbreviations are for each level. He's talking about long, uh, he, he, he's getting into that. And if I need to elaborate, I actually can. But I don't want to break the bill because like I'm saying, I'm trying to let him teach. And we ain't gonna make this too long.
Including RNA is a regulatory RNA. We'll talk about that later. It doesn't go for anything. By the way, you may see that the slides blink every now and then. I, I can solve that problem too. I have to unplug a cable and plug it back in. Not sure why that happens. Maybe I have defective hardware. So viral RNAs are made from by Paul two that include the pre mRNA, primary micro RNAs. In fact, the hepatitis Delta virus genome RNA and mRNA are made by Paul two. That's interesting. That's an RNA virus. It's actually a satellite. It needs to be in the same cell as hepatitis B virus. Yet its RNA genome is copied by Paul two. It's the only example that we know of. We'll talk about that in its own session later on in this course. And human herpes virus, a polyadenylated nuclear RNAs, which are different from mRNA, so made from, by Paul two. Alright, then Paul three is responsible for the synthesis of precursors to T RNAs. They're important, right? The adapters for protein synthesis. Some ribosomal RNAs and some small nuclear RNAs. And viruses have, some viruses have Paul three in their reproduction cycles, including adenovirus, the VARNAs, which are immune antagonists, as we'll see later. Human bokeh virus. A, a small RNA. Every time I, I say bokeh, I think of Florida, right? It's not isolated in Florida. And then, uh, murine herpes virus sixty eight. Primary micro RNAs. Now you may say, why so specific? That's, these are the viruses that have been studied to find this. And it may be that other viruses utilize Paul three for these purposes as well, but we simply haven't found out. Alright, um, now another important factoid here. Only DNA viruses that reproduce in the cytoplasm encode an RNA polymerase like, like this Paul two typically. Because think of it, Paul two, all these enzymes, by the way, inhabit the nucleus. That's where they make ribosomal RNAs, T RNAs, mRNA, et cetera. Paul one, two and three are made in the cytoplasm, but they quickly go in the nucleus and that's where they're catalytically active. So if you, if you are a virus that goes in the nucleus, you could in theory utilize Paul two and three. But many viruses do not go in the nucleus. As Rich Condit likes to say, they avoid the nuclear bureaucracy. I think that's fabulous. There is a lot of bureaucracy in the nucleus. It's kind of like going to Washington DC. Many people like to avoid it. So if you're a pox virus or a giant virus that stays in the cytoplasm, there's no way you're going to get access to Paul two and three, right? So you have to make your own. It has to be encoded in your genome. But that's easy to figure out, right? Because if you just know that these polymerases, these cell polymerases are in the, sorry, in the nucleus, then if the virus is exclusively in the cytosol, it will need to encode its own. By the way, I figured out why I was losing my cursor. I woke up at four AM and I, and I had a ha ha moment. These things bug me all night. You know, sometimes my, I lose my cursor. It turns out there's a setting in keynote to keep the cursor on all the time. Duh. Alright. Let's take a look at the process of transcription. Here at the top is your double stranded DNA. Blue is the plus strand, which is equivalent to mRNA, right? The, the light Blue is the plus strand, which is equivalent to mRNA, right? The light blue is the negative strand. And that red arrow is a promoter for transcription. That's another word that we will look at in a moment. A promoter is where transcription begins. And we usually show it as a red arrow and the direction of the arrow indicates the direction of mRNA synthesis or transcription. Now the transcription, to make mRNA, which is plus stranded, the polymerase is going to copy the minus strand, right? It's not going to copy the plus strand because that would give it a negative sense mRNA and that wouldn't work. Wouldn't be translated. So even though the top strand is the same sense as mRNA, it's not copied, the minus strand is copied. So the enzyme called 2 binds to the template, initiates synthesis at the promoter. We'll look at that process in some detail in a moment. And then it starts to make an mRNA shown in the light green there.
Alright, so not to confuse anyone, what he mentioned earlier about promoter, I'm gonna go ahead and give you that. It says transcription by RNA polymers 2. Accurate initiation of transcription by RNA polymers 2 is directed by specific DNA sequences located near the initiation site called the promoter. The promoter and the additional DNA sequences that govern transcription make up transcriptional control regions. So I want to say this again to slow it down so everyone is abreast to this when they see it. Accurate initiation of transcription by RNA polymers 2 is directed by specific DNA sequences located near the initiation site called the promoter. The promoter and the additional DNA sequences that govern transcription make up transcriptional control region. These sequences of DNA viruses and retroviruses were among the first to be examined experimentally. And you heard him say that. For example, the human adenovirus type 2 major late promoter was the first from whom, which the accurate initiation of transcription was reconstituted in vitro. Subsequently, the study of viral transcription yielded fundamental information about mechanisms by which RNA polymers 2 transcription is initiated and regulated.
And by the way, for those of you that have questions, we're gonna hit a pause. You know, we have a little quiz question and I'll get to them. I'll get to all of them. So be patient. Don't be mad at me. I'm here for you. So we make a little bit of mRNA and then that mRNA is capped. A cap group is put on. Shown here is M7 GPPPMP. And it's in a little blue box. That's our convention for cap. We talked about caps last time because influenza virus polymerase steals them from the host cell. And exactly what they are, I will show you in a moment. And then eventually the polymerase makes the entire pre mRNA. You know, it doesn't have to be the whole genome. It could be part of the genome. There are usually termination signals for it to stop. But it's a precursor for the most part. The most MRNAs are further processed. And we're going to talk about that today. So there are sequences that are removed. And they're called introns. I like that word too. Intron was made up. Intervening sequence to pink, it's removed. And then what are left are the green sequences that code for protein, which are called exons. Not two X's, just one. You know, it's different from the gas company. In fact, this was named exon before SO became exon. When I was a kid, all the gas stations were SO. And then suddenly they changed and I got very upset. I didn't understand why they changed. But then when I went to Europe as a kid, they were still SO. It was funny. Anyway, exons are the parts of the mRNA that code for protein. Introns don't, they're removed by a process called splicing, which we will talk about today.
Exons code for protein. Exons code for protein. Introns do not. Exons code for protein. When you're dealing with viruses, viruses need what? Protein. That's why they absorb. That's why they deal with the ribosomes and then they, they initiate themselves to teach the ribosome how to replicate the virus. And then the virus spreads in throughout the body, attacking the rest of the body. Remember, go back to the ribosome lecture and listen to the information that's actually in the lecture that tells us how viruses utilize the things that we need in us and use them to teach that the ribosome, hey, look, nah, I understand that you're dealing, you're making out this protein. So look, what I'm telling you to do is I need you to replicate this. I'm going to absorb all your protein. You're going to replicate this and you're going to expand me out to the rest of your body and duplicate me. And I'm just going to attack the rest of the body, beat you up, and I might kill you. I might, you might have some long-term effects. Or you might be able to survive me for a little bit, but I'll be back. That's basically what SARS-CoV-2 is doing when it enters the body. So we know that exons create protein. So look, I'm not going to drag this out. I'm going, we're going to get through this. We're 23 minutes into a two-hour build, but we're not really going to do the two-hour build because the the actual class is about an hour and some changes. It's broken up because of questions and he stopped, the stopping periods and things of that nature. It's really about an hour or so video. So what we're going to do is we want to stop right here. We're going to convene tomorrow. We might get through more of the lecture tomorrow. Hell, I might even come back in about 30 minutes or whatever. I don't know. It depends on how I feel. But I just don't want to overload the video. I want to keep it to where it's digestible because a lot of big words were used. And a lot of people may need to rely on a dictionary and things of that nature to look up what some of these words mean, which would be helpful in advancing knowledge. What I'm trying to get people to do is slow the conversation down and let us work on our misunderstandings so that we can come up with a way to understand these things properly and be able to progress in our, in our knowledge. Like if we're going to really be about our people, if we're going to really be about moving our people forward, solving problems and creating solutions to those problems, we have to, we have to be the smart ones. And then we have to take what we learn and apply what we learn to advance knowledge. Being scientific means to know and to do. So we have to have the correct research methodology. Right? And then we have to know how to apply that research methodology. And we have to use that rigorous, those rigorous methods to solve problems. Most people like this is irrelevant. Years ago, this would have been irrelevant. However, SARS-CoV-2 enters the atmosphere and it's hella irrelevant, it's hella event. Because we don't know how viruses behave, we don't know how viruses affect the body, we don't know how our immune system responds to these particular viruses. We don't know, we don't know what's being described in our bodies. See, what I'm trying to get y'all to see is when people be like, well, I've been infected with a virus and I got over it. But you don't know what's actually going in your body. Look how technical this has been. This is about proteins that are being used. This is talking about transcribing certain, the virus transcribing to certain aspects, dealing with your DNA, using RNA. It's a whole complicated process. So people don't know what's actually happening. You don't. So we're going to try to figure this thing out together. And we're going to try to get through this lecture together. And then where our shortcomings are, we'll be able to wrestle with each other and figure these things out. Where we exceed it, we should be able to reach back and pull somebody up to our level. But I challenge everybody to up their ante because yeah, this is a course. This is what we're taking. This is what several of us are taking every Monday and Wednesday. We have class every Monday and Wednesday at the same time. Every Monday and Wednesday. 10:00 AM Central, 11:00 AM Eastern. Every Monday and Wednesday. But I never said, you know what, let's just break it out and just walk through it. However, we still have another teaching tool. We still have another teaching tool, right? What SARS-CoV-2 taught me. So if you have this, this will give you a basic understanding. See, this, this stuff that I'm dealing with right now is too technical for a lot of people. But when you get into this text right here, it get a little technical, but it also get a little layman, a lot of layman. A lot of just general, a lot of layman. And you're learning what SARS-CoV-2 taught me. And hopefully it teaches you too. But now we slowing it down and we dealing with these viruses from a different perspective because now we know how they behave in our bodies and what they're using at initiation sites, what are they using to replicate? What are they using to feed off of us? What are they using to infect us even more? How they're duplicating, how they even existing in us, what? All of that. And we didn't even get into the immune, you know what I mean? Come on, man. We need to know the behavior of these viruses. Now, I know it might not mean much to you, but knowing how a virus behaves is very beneficial. So that we know if another pandemic happens in our lifetime, we know how to actually deal with that. Or if another virus emerges and it starts to affect people, we know what's going on. We could tell. And then when these scientists are publishing all these journals and articles and things of that nature, we can follow along. We're not, we're not slow anymore. We actually can follow along. We're not intimidated by the big words. We're not intimidated by these scientific journals. We can now boom, oh yeah, you're talking about that. Alright. Oh yeah, you're talking about this. Okay, so you're talking about the, you're talking about at the, at the site of, you know, where the DNA is replicated in. Oh, you're talking about the DNA synthesis. Oh, you're talking about DNA repair. Oh, you're talking about, it has to be double stranded. Correct. Okay, yeah, now I understand that, I understand transcription templates. This whole thing is about transcription, which is very key in this stuff. So you know, some nerve moment, man. You know what I'm saying? It's a nerve moment. Right now, we're on page, if you, if you have the book that I have, the updated version, we're, we're actually on page 201, but we're walking into 202, 203, summarized 204, 205. And what we'll do again tomorrow is we'll conclude and come back. And we'll deal with that. I don't know if the other, if the brothers on the other channel are still alive and popping. But you might want to reconvene with that. But if you don't have your copy of what SARS-CoV-2 taught me, you slip. Get your copy. Get your copy. Order it now. It's going out to you tomorrow. Get your copy. We have, you know, updated, there's been five purchases over the last 24 hours or something like that, five books purchased. So you know, ramp it up, man. Family members, friends, everything. Get it, get it, get it, get it, get it. And on that note, man, I'm gonna say Simon Hotel, we stopped sharing. And we'll be back live tomorrow. We gonna get, we gonna get to it. We'll get to it and we're gonna make things happen. So y'all enjoy the rest of y'all day, man.